Like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for May 23, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Little?
There.
Schwartz?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
Bailey?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions this morning? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second. And moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda's received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Please step to the podium, give your name and address and comments, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Vince Corkery, 9001 Spring Creek Road, Fort City, southeast of Blackhawk County. Anyway, I own property in Blackhawk and Buchanan. In Buchanan, they're proposing to put 70 turbine windmills in and like that. And I just wanted to know if he was aware that there's leases in effect at this point in Blackhawk County.
I'm not sure. I was going to see if anybody could answer that today, but we can certainly take that under advisement and make sure.
I'd give you a copy of this.
Please.
Okay, I could, I could address that. Yeah, we've not received any things or any applications for Blackhawk County for wind energy.
Okay.
If they're in our jurisdiction, they should be applying directly to us.
Sure. And we'll, we'll follow up on that, too. I just thought for him to just make the comments.
Take a copy if you'd like.
Okay. So this person, they're in Blackhawk County?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. They have to apply to be in Blackhawk County.
They've got, it's registered. But anyway, I just want to let you know that their next year energy is, is out and they're, they're signing leases as we speak.
Thank you. Well, Frank bringing that to our attention and we'll have Seth.
They got ahold of me last June and they wanted to propose to put eight windmills on my property. I wasn't interested. I put in my, I don't care file, not come across this and I just, I'm not in favor of it.
Just an awareness. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing to our attention. Anyone else that has any comments, public comments today? Anyone on Zoom with any public comments? All right. We'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second. Moved in seconded.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Our total bill payments today are $534,961.11. And of that, there's at least one, we're getting into construction pay season, so we have a payment for, I believe it's Hickory Hills Septic System, for $87,799. So that's a piece of it. We're also paying for some Microsoft 365 license renewals for $81,882. And those are also the larger payments today. We are also making a payment from the 6040 Fund for $2,422.63. Everything appears to be in order.
How much of that is payroll?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah, payroll doesn't come through in the regular bill payments. Yep.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Excuse me. Moving on to item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Kathy, nothing?
Oh, my goodness.
Sure, because they're already done.
You have to get up to the podium and just speak, right? No, thank you. Oh, Griffin's got something.
Good morning, Board. Oh, I was just going to say we're starting to spray the northwest quarter of the county for, I'm currently following the brush cutting tractor and spraying stumps and then any other undesirable broad leaves or small trees. So it is underway on, on all the gravels and the guardrails have been sprayed so far this year as well. Tony Woods has done that. So everything's going according to plan and as long as we don't have a lot of windy days, I think we'll be able to make some good headways.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just very quickly, Mike Hendrickson, Director, County Conservation, a little pre-Memorial Day story. Our campgrounds are either full or nearly full, and that's every one of them. So camping's going to be big. Everybody's out and about. It looks like a good weekend weather-wise. Rivers are in where they need to be. So it looks like it's going to be a really, really good weekend, so.
It does. Yeah, good luck with everything. It does sound good. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to give an update, department head or elected official? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on to item five, minutes approved for May 16, 2023.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We have three hearings today coming up. One will be a rezone request by Sarah Barons. One is a fiscal year 23 budget amendment, and the third is a proposed bond issuance of not to exceed 4.8 million for Solid Waste Management Commission. Item seven is the consent agenda. All items are acted upon by a single resolution unless there's something someone would like to remove for discussion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the statement of
completion and final acceptance of work for Project L 7011, placement of revetment at bridge abutments be approved and direct the chair to sign for same and authorize and direct the auditor to make final payment in the amount of $4,823.05 with a total project cost of $160,768.23 as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
With a completion date of June 30, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Good morning, Board. As is customary during our final acceptances of our projects, I'd like to show you a few slides and just go very briefly over the work. So this was a project that was let last fall with the intention being to place revetment at four locations. You can see them up on the screen here. They were three river locations and then one on Spring Creek. And this is to replace revetment that has just been washed away or eroded away over the years. During our routine bridge inspections, these just accumulated over the past few years. You'll be able to see some erosion that's occurred over time. And then the job is to replace the revetment to protect them from scouring to losing the, any type of fill material that are around the, the steel H pile that hold up our structures. So these were two of the structures on Cedar Wopsie Road and Dunkerton Road Bridge. You can see that in the photos there, you can see there's just basically sand and a few rocks, a few pieces of revetment left underneath the structures. So these were taken before the work started. This is why we want to get in there and place some protection against those, the stream banks, the river banks to prevent them from scouring out. This is Spring Creek. This is after the repairs. You can see that our contractor came in and placed this, the revetment underneath the abutments around the piers. We are not able to do this work. We don't have the type, the right equipment to get this work done, so we did contract it to PCI. It was a no working day contract. It was a completion date of the end of this fiscal year project. They have, they have completed it over the winter months. And then this is the last structured, the large Brandon Road Bridge over the Cedar River. You can see this far bank over here. I believe this is the east side of the river, has quite a length of revetment that needed to be replaced. And then this is just a close-up of that work. So I would ask that you finalize this contract and we be released, we are able to release the retainage to PCI then for doing the work.
Any questions or comments for Kathy? Hearing none. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy. Item B, resolution that the best bid received from Bill Caldwell Ford, Hudson, Iowa, for the purchase of one used 2015 Ford F-550 truck in fiscal year 2024 with a bid of $54,952.49 for the Blackhawk County Secondary Roads Department be approved and direct the chair to sign letter of intent as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy, did you want to comment?
Yeah, as, as a bit of background, we did budget $70,000 in our FY '24 budget for a truck, a chassis, and a flatbed truck, excuse me, a flatbed for to go on the back of the chassis. We did budget for a used vehicle. As you know, vehicles are in, they're hard to acquire right now. Large, large pickup trucks are equally as hard to find. We started that process early in the hopes we could find something and then in looking at our bidding requirements, there's no guidance on a used vehicle. We just, we elected to come to you with a letter of intent to purchase this vehicle. We did look at, Griffin found four comparables in the upper Midwest here. There's not many, like I said, there's just not many available. No other comparables were found in Iowa. I've sent you a list of the comparables. They range from like twice as many miles to, to having many of the same criteria. He did put together some criteria. I sent you the list of the four comparables. I would ask that we be allowed to purchase or write, that you approve this letter of intent to Bill Caldwell so that we can pay them after July 1st for this vehicle. Can I answer any questions? And Griffin's here as well.
How many miles are on this truck?
On?
They're 65,000 miles. So relatively, for the year, that's relatively low. And looking at even newer, newer series of those trucks, a lot of them have 100 to 150,000 and about that 70,000 budget is what they were going for. So this is local that I saw one day and stopped in and looked at it and, and had the mechanic look it over as well. And I wasn't going to purchase anything that you wouldn't purchase.
Is it a diesel?
It is, yes.
Yeah. And I believe, and Bill Caldwell obviously is willing to hold the letter of intent and hold the vehicle for us for, until after July 1st?
Yes.
Tom, you don't have any cousins that work at Bill Caldwell Ford, right?
You know, something I think I do, so I'm going to probably abstain or vote no on this. Kathy, I do have one question now that Tavis started it, I guess. You don't have any other vehicles can be utilized this short time during the summer?
Actually, we are short, we are a bit short on pickup trucks. We do have two interns with us this summer. They're, they're using some of the, they're using several of the vehicles. We are hoping to get this outfitted, this vehicle outfitted for, to hold a spray tank. I mean, Griffin's told you about how we need to get his sprayer on, on the back of a large truck. So we would, we would like to move ahead so that he can be more productive in spraying.
Will this truck, will this truck be utilized in the off months in other areas?
Yes, this, this truck, I'll be able to utilize to pull the hydro cedar this fall as well, once we do all our ditch cleanouts. And the goal would be to get the sprayer set up, built by this fall so we could do fall application on, on trees around the county as well. So that would be, you know, the biggest thing. And then I would be able to utilize it for taking the skid steer with some of the attachments as well to, and the chipper to do cut tree stuff this, this winter. So I think it'll be utilized quite a bit once, once it's here, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Any, anything else, Tom? From you?
No.
Oh, well.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you. Item C, discussion and potential agreement, a potential agreement, not on, between Blackhawk County and Spyglass Group LLC to complete an audit of telecommunications invoicing. So who will be discussing, Mr. Giving?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
We were approached by this company to perform an audit on our billing. Just to kind of give you a little idea of what our phone billing looks like for the county, it's several pages long. In talking with this company, they're confident based on some previous, previous experience that it's not uncommon to find discrepancies in large phone bills such as ours. And those could be taxes that might be hidden, hidden fees, different items like that within our phone billing. This would be an audit of the last previous two months billing. It would not include any software, hardware, just our, our physical billing that we receive from our vendor. We are aware that there is another municipality in the area of Waterloo, I believe, is looking at working with this service as well. I have not heard any feedback from them as far as experience, but we just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. How they get paid is 50% of the savings that they find, so there's no upfront cost for the county. Again, if they find that there are discrepancies, there's hidden fees, what have you, there is a contract that we would sign and they would get 50% of the savings and we would receive 50% of the savings.
Do they do that on an annual basis or monthly or?
This would, what we would do right now would be a one-time audit, bringing it to our attention.
A one-time audit of one bill?
Two. They'd go back two bills. There are other services that they provide if we choose to pursue those. At this point, all we're looking at is just a, an audit of our billing only.
And if I might add, I think that the savings go back, I think, two years. So if they find, they often find that you're being charged the wrong tariffs or governments are being charged taxes that you aren't supposed to be. And they, they're hard to find on the bills because they're calling them different things. So they're, they just take it, you upload it to them, they work with your vendor to straighten it all out. And they don't get paid until we have a check in our hands for our half. So for example, if the total savings for that two years is $10,000, we'll get a check for five. And then, well, we'll get a check for 10 and then we pay them five technically. And then going forward, we, we get that full 10,000 savings every, you know, until we change vendors or something like that, so.
And, and we're not on the hook if there's resistance from the, the vendor to, to pay us back?
Nope. We, that, that's the beauty of it. We don't let go of a penny until we have the money in our hands, so.
And I believe, Mike, you have reviewed this as well, right?
I have not reviewed this.
Actually, you have. You just don't remember.
Oh.
We, we started working on this in March.
Oh.
And so you did, I should, I should have warned you about earlier, but you did review it. It's just been a couple.
I know you review a lot of things. I do.
It's been a couple months ago, but he, he did look at it.
Okay.
So I do, I do remember a contingent fee contract, though.
Sorry about that, Mike. So are there any other questions with that? I guess if the board is interested in doing this, we would bring this back to a, another meeting for a final recommendation to approve the contract.
And the contract would be for how long a period?
I believe 12.
The contract itself is just, will they get this done and you?
They just keep on.
I don't know how much time it takes them to actually analyze the bills, but I don't, I don't know that it's a term because they do pass bills. So we just actually upload our 300-page phone bill to them for a couple months and then they analyze them. And one of the things that you do in that contract is you're, you're allowing them to speak with your vendor on your behalf. So they just kind of go away, deal with the vendor and come back to us with the one-time project.
And this will include our cell phone providers as well as just?
It does not at this time. We don't have a lot of cell phones and they're different contracts with different vendors. So we, we felt the, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, was our main, our main landline phone system.
But I believe that could be an option moving forward if we do see that this is successful.
It definitely could.
Yeah.
Who initiated this, Rory or Michelle?
This was a joint project.
Yeah. I, I kind of came in later in the, in the process, yes.
So, yeah, okay. Do we know of any like references or any people using it? Any, I assume governments probably use it.
Yeah, I, there was a flyer and I don't, I didn't.
I, I have it here. There's no local. The company's out of Ohio. I know that the city of Waterloo had looked at it previously. I believe they're looking at signing up with them, but I have not received any kind of feedback from them. That is certainly, you know, that's something we always like to do. So at this point, I, you know, if the board is interested in that, that is certainly something we can pursue and get some, try to get some feedback and some experiences from other, other companies that have gone through them. I think that that would be probably a wise move.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. I think so, too.
Tom, you had some, yeah, I was going to say you had some concerns. Oh, I was just going to say you had some concerns about security or, and something I was going to.
Well, upfront, it, it sounds like a win-win situation, but anymore, I put a call in for Al, even though I know he does deal with the phones. Security was one reason. I haven't heard back from Al yet. I think a good idea is to check references, but it, I don't know what they're actually, you know, when you say they're going to look at our bills, are there's going to be phone numbers there? Is there going to be passwords there? I mean, I don't know any of this. Again, it sounds like a good deal, but you know, we're in an area of dealing with some security issues throughout the county and we really don't need to create another situation, especially if they're going to be dealing with some of our vendors. So I think we should probably check references, see if there's any locally Waterloo and so forth and see if we can get some information if they did and if they didn't, why they did. And kind of go from there, but I, I don't think we should jump right on it so quick.
Yeah, I can definitely do that. That's a very good idea. And I will actually work through with Al on this as well, just to make sure that he doesn't see any security issues with it. Looking just at our billing, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that there would be a security breach, but definitely in our best interest to work as a team on this and, and just make sure.
And, you know, if they were to say do it the first two times or whatever, I'm assuming they'd go over it with our staff, which would be Rory and yourself and your staff, that it would give you some future expertise, what to look for, where, to the point where we wouldn't need anybody to do that for the county. So I just think there's some questions that should be asked. But yeah, I did have some security concerns.
Absolutely.
A little more information maybe to get back to everybody. I was going to say, are there any other questions or comments, concerns?
I'd be fine with more information with possible board action, but I think might give Mike a chance to review that contract one more time.
I just confirmed through my, through my email from March and early April that I did in fact review it. My question was how much access they would have to our systems. So it was actually along the same lines of Tom's concern in that regard. And I don't know if we've, if we've necessarily resolved that at this point.
The answer was they don't access our system. They just get the bills. They, we, we upload bills, which I think we all know are public information anyway. And they use those.
Okay.
Could we get a copy of what's on a bill, the board, so we can see what kind of information they'd be actually be looking at?
A page or two.
Yeah.
Not 300 pages. Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's, yep.
I can easily see where hidden costs would be in there that we shouldn't be paying.
Well, if anybody, I mean, phone bills are notoriously pretty complicated when you're looking at them. And that's essentially what they're doing is breaking that out and again, just making sure there's no hidden fees and hidden taxes that might be snuck in there, hidden lines. It all sounds like it's a fairly common thing that happens with these complexed phone bills, so.
And, and speaking from trying to review phone bills?
Yeah.
It's, it's almost impossible, the way it's worded, to figure out what surcharges governments are subject to and which ones they're not. It's, it's just really complicated. So for, for someone that spent the time and effort to develop a program to do it, it seems to make sense.
Well, someone's in business to do this, so I was going to say they probably work hard and know the ways that, yeah, things to look for, so that's.
So moving forward.
I think it's a good idea to pursue it, but I guess I always go by that old theory, there isn't nothing free in this day and age.
Okay, so moving forward, I will provide or seek out some references and work with Al and his team just to confirm there is no security issues or concerns. And we'll, we'll get that information and bring it back to the board then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, other business. The time is 9:27 and we are in, into a hearing on Propose Ordinance Number 77-279, Barons Rezones. Is there a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on May 15, 2023 in the Waterloo Courier.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Were there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
Oh, man.
Thank you. Oral comments, Seth.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on April 18, 2023 reviewed the request by Sarah Barons to rezone 2.9 acres from agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct a new single-family home at east of 8911 Taylor Road, which is 1,600 feet south of Winslow Road and Taylor Road intersection. The request was at 8991 Taylor Road, request to rezone 2.9 acres from A to AR. In order to construct a new single-family home, it was moved by Adrian Segat and by Brutet to approve the request by Sarah Barons to rezone 2.9 acres from A to AR district in order to construct a new single-family home. Nagel voted to deny the request. It was approved with a 5-1 vote. Nagel voted to deny the request because the site had agricultural land that was of moderate agricultural value. One parcel containing the 2.9 acres of proposed rezoned area has been zoned to agricultural district since the adoption of zoning warrants in 1982. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zoned agricultural district to the south and east. Land in the north is zoned AR agricultural residential district. Land in the west is zoned to agricultural district and AR agricultural residential district. The rezone area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Land in the north is designated as residential. Land in the south, east and west is designated as agricultural and parks and open space. None of the rezone areas located in a special flood hazard area. The site had a land evaluation score of 62 out of 212 indicating moderate agricultural value. The applicant wishes to rezone the 2.9 acres from A to AR in order to construct a single-family home. The proposed rezone area is not located in the airport land use high of weight review area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a 5-1 vote at the regular meeting. The technical review committee stated that there was not an access or frontage road on the rezone exhibit. However, the surveyor engineer however indicated there will be adequate street frontage noted on the minor plat when it is submitted for approval. The plat area will extend all the way to the street right of way of, of Taylor Road. will extend all the way to the street right of way of, of, uh, Taylor Road. And that's the staff report.
Thank you. You said that score was 62 out of 212?
Um, yeah, well, the, the land valuation score was 62 and then the leastest score was, um, what is that? 212.
212.
Indicating moderate agricultural value.
Thank you. Is, I was gonna say, does the owner want to speak to it?
Yes.
If you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't have, I guess I don't have anything else to say.
No, no, I was gonna say, if you did want to say something, you have certainly an opportunity to do. He said everything that you needed.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion and second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing is closed. Item four is a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board of supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item five, ordinance adoption, that ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 279 to section 6B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Sarah Barron's and to consider the same for adoption and if adopted would be known as ordinance number 77-279.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There are no further questions or comments for Seth? Please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you. Item B, and the time is 9:31, um, hearing on fiscal year 23 budget amendment. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, hold the hearing. Request for oral or written comments. Mr. Veder, are there any written comments?
Oh, man.
Okay, thank you. All right, sweetie. All right.
Al, can you help me share screen?
Thank you, Seth.
All right, so. Oh, thought we were there, but we weren't. First document is actually the publication notice that was in the newspaper, which rolls up all our funds together. So you can, you can see the total numbers. We're actually increasing, um, total revenues and transfers in by 13,158,281 dollars. The bulk of that is really for transfers of ARPA funds for lost revenue, which is, um, salary replacement revenue. That, that will ultimately be designated for projects as we've, as the board, I think, has previously agreed to do at year end. Uh, and we also are amending to increase expenses by 13,129 dollars and 113,129,132 dollars. And again, the bulk of that is transfers out, which is ARPA and also adding, um, 125,000 that we typically transfer from the general fund into our insurance fund to pay deductibles and that sort of thing. So the net, we actually are, if you go by this, the net's actually increasing by a small amount, 29,000. I suspect it will actually be more than that as we get closer. And if you want, I did provide a word summary of all the changes, which we can go through. I organized this more by fund so that we could see more what's happening by fund. Um, let's see, other things. We increased expenses, for example, the medical examiner's office, as we talked about during the 24 budget preparation, those costs have been running higher than what we've been budgeting historically. I also increased juvenile court expenditures. There's a payment that we're required to make to the state annually that is increasing substantially. So that amount covered that payment for this year.
It's typically a 25,000 that's gonna be going forward or?
No, the actual, the total, I believe the payment we made this year was about 186,000, but we weren't budgeting that much. And we, I did bump that up in the 24 budget because I spoke to the person at the state who bills us and she thought it was looking like for 24, we, it would likely be in the area of 200,000. So we are seeing increases there. Under physical health and social services, we did a budget amendment to increase the Health Department for their technology grant, which you may be familiar with, where they're putting technology in the conference rooms. That's wonderful at the Health Department, having just been there and used it yesterday. Um, conservation, we recorded grant reimbursements for the Casey Lake Project. That's another 194,000 in revenue. Um, we also, for elections, we increased expenses by 40,000 for additional special elections that are being held this year. But there's also 40,000 in additional revenue for that election, so that ends up netting with no effect. Um, capital expenses in the general fund, we added the 300,000 for the technology grant expenses. And then for conservation, we increased capital expenses by 259,100 dollars. That's a little more than the grant reimbursements because the design is not paid 100% by their grant. So some of that's running through our funds. Debt service fund, um, I did budget for the reimbursement received from Blackhawk County, or from the Solid Waste Commission to Blackhawk County for their bond payments. That, that wasn't in the original budget. And I also increased expenditures for the amount that they'll pay. Some of that was recorded. That's why those amounts are a little bit different. Secondary funds, engineering is increasing their maintenance expenditures and reducing their capital expenditures by the same amount, 564,769. And that's just because the activities they're doing fall under the DOT category of maintenance rather than construction. Um, REAP, we increased those expenditures by 37,500, just to reflect the projects that are going on there. The Conservation Trust, similar thing, increasing expenditures by 53,000 and increasing donation revenues by 25. And both of those funds had donations received in prior years or grants received in prior years that are being used to pay all those expenses. ARPA, I increased the expenses by just under 2 million and will have to pick up revenue in that same amount. So we, it looks right now that we'll, we'll spend at least two and a half million on ARPA projects this year. The jail commissary fund, I increased expenditures and revenues by 185,000 to reflect, um, more carefully what they're actually generating in revenue and spending this year. And then capital improvements, again, um, increasing that by 286,000 for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. And if you would like, I also put together something to kind of show a really brief summary of where we're at in each fund as of April 30th of this year. Um, let me see if I can try to make that bigger. Trying to make it brief, so we're gonna start with the general fund. Um, we've actually received 98% of our revenue budget for the year already at the end of April. And a lot of that's because property taxes come in at different times of year and we have received most of those. So we've received that. Our total expenses, we are actually under budget. They're mostly due to salaries and benefits, which I assume is vacant positions of about a million. So when you look at this as of the end of April, it would appear that we might be, um, under budget in the general fund by as much as 4.8 million. The supplemental fund, um, again, we've got 98% of that revenue as well because that's almost all property taxes and expenses are tracking well. So that, that fund will do well too. We get to the rural fund though, and things are a little bit different. Um, I'm still working on the revenue. Revenue is at 91% of budget through the end of April, but a lot of that's property taxes and it seems like it should be closer to 98%. So I've got some questions out. We're working on that. So that's actually not quite where we'd like it to be probably today. And expenses, we start to see where there, there's one issue in our whole budget and that's salaries and benefits. It's actually over budget by 225 dollars at the end of April. And that, that is because several things. There are some employees that were coded incorrectly 100% to the rural fund that should have been 75% to the general, or 25% to the general fund, sorry about that. And then there were, as we kept digging into it, it appears there are a couple of employees that were not budgeted, that, longtime employees that should have been budgeted, that weren't. So we are making corrections to get that straightened out, but those were not made until May. So when I show you April, it, you see it going in the hole. That will be corrected for year end. So hopefully the rural fund will be, by the time we get all those corrections made, I think we'll, hopefully we'll be close to net zero there. Secondary roads fund, revenue is tracking just a little bit below budget right now, but that is mostly due to projected grant reimbursements, which are kind of an in and out. So hopefully that will, we will either have less expenses to come with less revenue or we will get both. And you can see they're under budget on expenses as well by 1.7 million. So as of the end of April, that fund is healthy too. I would entertain any questions. I think that's all I have today for that.
Were those, um, positions that, that were being funded 100% or supposed to be 75, 20, were those deputies from when they made the decision a couple of years ago to? Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Is that, is that something recent, Michelle, that was in air or has that been like that from day one? Um, in regards to the rural, um, these positions that were budgeted wrong?
It appeared to be just something that happened in 2023. There's a lot of turnover in 2023, so it, it, it gets difficult sometimes to track which position's leaving and which one's coming and how it should be allocated in the budget. So I just.
Were they, were they all deputies like Chris just asked?
Um, yes, I believe they're all deputies. I don't believe there were any detention officers. I think it's all deputies.
Okay. And then, uh, just regarding revenue, uh, which could go up, usually it'll go up a little bit because it's always an estimate. In ARPA, how, is there any way compare last year at this time on our departments on, are they sticking pretty close to their budget? Are they over, are they under? Or is there any way of telling that?
I can get you something on that. Everybody's tracking well. I guess I didn't compare this year to last year with the percentages, but I, I can do that. I'll get that for you. Yeah, because even overall with the sheriff's deputies, a lot of times, I think in the past, we've looked at departments as a whole, so all their funds. So when you have funds in different buckets, we just combined them all. And when you look, when you look at it that way, it's fine because they've got savings in the general fund. I, I was interested or concerned, I guess, about the rural fund because I noticed they had a mountain hole. So that's why I wanted to show that to you. But when you look at that as a whole, there's not, there isn't a problem. It's just when you separate out the rural fund from the general. And I can't really tell you, I mean, I can tell you that for 2022, the department as a whole was under budget and also for 2020 and 2021. So I don't think it's a long-term problem. I think there just something odd happened in 2023.
Yeah. The, uh, medical examiner, that's been an ongoing thing because it's pretty hard to, uh, guesstimate his budget. Uh, so I think that's probably adjusted about every budget amendment.
Yes, it is. And so that's why I did request that we increase that in the 2024 budget. So maybe we'll get lucky and we won't have to do that, but we'll see. That remains to be seen yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else you want to add or any questions or comments? All right, thank you. We had a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's good to close the hearing. Item next is a resolution that the fiscal year 2023 budget amend.
I'm sure. Um, I didn't record a motion to close.
Oh.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. So noted. All right. Resolution that the fiscal year 2023 budget amendment be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. If there are no other questions or comments, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item C, resolution that the finance director be directed to increase slash decrease appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023 to various operating budgets for various county departments and offices as submitted on the attached budget amendment summary.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little? Little?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you. Item D, resolution that amendment number one to the Blackhawk County fiscal year 2023 secondary roads budget, as included and approved May 23rd, 2023 in the Blackhawk County budget amendment as item number nine B, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Kathy, yeah, uh, per DOT rules, we cannot not exceed our budget, in this case the FY23 budget by even one penny. We have four pots of money that we do all of our budgeting in. And as Michelle said, we need to move some money from our, uh, construction over to our operations, our maintenance budgets. That's what I'm asking through this amendment to be able to do that for FY23 budget, so that we are in compliance with DOT, the law.
Yeah, not even a penny, huh? Thank you. All right. If we have no further questions or comments, please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item E, 947, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed 4.8 million dollars of general obligation bonds of Blackhawk County Iowa for essential county purposes in order to provide funds to pay the costs of financing works and facilities useful for the collection and disposal of solid waste, including the planning, acquisition, leasing, construction, reconstruction, extension, remodeling, improvement, repair, equipping, maintenance and operation of those works and facilities, including the cell W-3 Phase II landfill expansion project at the Blackhawk County landfill for essential county purposes, which funds will be used and repaid by the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. Item one, or I, motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, hold the hearing. Request for oral or written comments. Mr. Veder, are there any written comments?
Oh, man.
Hearing none. Oral comments? Who will be making those today? Or anyone making those today? Did you want? John, do you want to speak to?
Good morning. My name is John Foster. I'm the administrator with the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. Uh, what we have in front of you is a, is a public hearing for allowing a 4.8 million dollar, uh, bond for the construction of our cell W3 Phase II project, which will give us another, about another 12 years of airspace capacity for the landfill.
And the time estimated to do this is soon, correct?
Correct. We've already started, uh, they've mobilized and began work this week. We'll end up, uh, having a complete, substantial completion by October of this year.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add or?
Just that we plan to actually hold the bond sale in July and close in August. So they're spending ahead a little bit till we get that closed and done. There'll be more to come on that.
Okay. All right, hearing none. No more questions, comments? Thank you. All right, hearing none. No more questions, comments. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the motion to close the hearing and receive and place on file the oral.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $4.8 million general obligation bonds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
I do know somebody here. I'll abstain.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Yes. Resolution passes. Item 10, work session. Discussion and possible board action for the American Rescue Plan Act county projects. Is there anyone that have anything they'd like to say, discuss here, updated? Anyone in the audience with an update or anything on, anything they'd like to share before we move on? Anyone on Zoom? All right. We'll save that for next week, then. Item 11, closed session. Item A, resolution to proceed into closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and/or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize county property. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka? Chalka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we're back into open session. I'd like a motion to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned from closed session. Item 12, any reports or information from the board?
Just a really quick, on the, on the logo rebrand, we had, we did have a total of eight. So one sort of snuck, I don't know if it snuck in, but initially thought we had seven, but we have eight. So those are out for review from that committee and.
Well, it came in on the time. It was just hidden somewhere in a.
Yeah, it was in on time.
Quarantined.
Yep. So the committee members are scoring those, and the top three will, will reach out for interviews, so.
Okay, super. Anything else to come from the board? Hearing none. We'll ask for a meeting for, our motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Don't hurry, everybody rushed. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.